Good morning. Tom, you may get your drink.
I'm waiting for you.
Paul?
No, no. It's Tom.
Thank you. Good afternoon. That's a lot of crush words. Hey, good morning.
Hi.
Super airways. Did you see that? I'm not a cop.
I did see it. I haven't made the change yet.
Jim looks lost.
They can just come back. They can get suggestions, get ideas, listen out to everyone, and really work on things. And if they're looking around and stop.
Got some doors done?
Yeah.
Just more. There never ends.
All right, good morning, everyone. Want to thank you for coming this morning. At this time, I'd like to call the Granville County Board of Education into order. We have all of our members here. Ms. Sue?
At this time, I'd like to call the county commissioners to order. I think we're missing one.
She just came in.
Oh, never mind. We have all of our members here, too.
Okay, all right. Good deal. I'd like to call on Dr. Houlihan if you would lead us in our invocation this morning.
Emily, Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to get together with our colleagues to talk about something that comes along every 10 years, the challenge we face. We also thank you for all of us who work hard in terms of service above self, no matter how difficult the situation may be, no matter how much we are appreciated or not appreciated from the folks we represent. But we thank you because we know you're behind us, we know you're working with us, and we will always look to you to help us as we move forward, serving you and serving our community. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Ms. Sue, would you like to call on your commissioner to pledge?
Yes. Commissioner Russ May, will you do the pledge allegiance for us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Want to welcome everyone this morning. I want to welcome our attorneys from Brooks and Pierce. Thank you for coming today. Both boards have their respective attorneys here as well. Today, we will be discussing redistricting. As we know, the census figures have begun to come out, and so that requires us to look at redistricting for the county. And so this morning, as we have our presentation, they will present the information that they have to us, and then we will have an opportunity to have some discussion and question and answers back and forth between the boards. Again, this affects how we will do our elections. We will do our elections in the coming cycle, and so we want to make sure that we keep that in mind. This is being livestreamed, so we want to remind you that when you do speak, please speak clearly into the mic so that that can be picked up on the livestream as well. Board members, one last, school board members, one last reminder. If you can see Dr. McLean before you leave today, there is some information to give you concerning some testing programs, so make sure you see her before you leave today. And so I'd like to again welcome the commissioners and turn it over to Chairman Henman for her comments.
Again, I would love to welcome each and every one of you here today. It needs each of us to do this. It's a very exciting time for us to learn that we have a lot more people in Granville County, and so because of that, we need to make some changes. So thank you, thank you for being here. Thank you for the other people coming, and thank you for whoever is online. We greatly appreciate you being here to help us with this. And I want to thank our staffs for doing all this. This is amazing, and our lawyers and everybody else. So thank you, thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Attorney Dubusson, I'd like to have you introduce our firm that will be presenting this morning, and so they'll go ahead and do their presentation at this point.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. We'll be hearing this morning from the lawyers from Brooks Pierce, Craig Shower and Amanda Hawkins, who are specialists in redistricting.
Yeah.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Who are specialists in redistricting, and they're going to give you some information to get this discussion started about the priorities of both boards for this round of redistricting.
Good morning. Thank you all for having us. Like Eva said, my name is Amanda Hawkins, and this is my colleague Craig Shower, and we're with the Brooks Pierce Law Firm. We are very excited to be working with y'all on redistricting. You know, like Dr. Cozart said in his invocation, this opportunity only comes around every 10 years, and so we're excited to be part of it this decade. Craig is handing out copies of the presentation, which we're projecting, and then copies of the map as well. The purpose of our presentation today, we've got two main goals. The first is to just give an overview of what this process is going to look like, what the next few months are going to look like, the things we need to keep in mind as we're redistricting. And the second is to get feedback from y'all that we can take to our demographer that he can use when he draws the first draft of the map. So we'll go ahead and get started. If I could have the next slide, please. Thank you. So this is just an overview of what the timeline is going to look like for redistricting. On August 16th, we got the kind of raw data about what the county looks like now. Our demographer is going to, with the feedback we get today, is going to put together an initial draft of the map. We will come back, we'll present that draft, y'all can give feedback. You know, the demographer is not from North Carolina, so he might put a line through a neighborhood, and so y'all will be able to tell us, no, that line shouldn't be there, that's going to split this neighborhood in the wrong way, things like that. You know, we can make however many edits y'all need, but the statutory deadline for the board of commissioners is November 17th, so we'll need to be done by then, and then, of course, the filing period and the primaries go forward. And then, I should have said this at the start, if y'all have any questions, please feel free to interrupt. We don't need to wait till the end. And if I have the next slide, thank you. Okay, so the first question is, can we redraw the maps? And there are statutory bases for redistricting, which mean that the standards for redrawing maps are slightly different for the school board versus the board of commissioners. Section 153A 22 governs the commissioners. For the commissioners to redistrict, you have to have a finding of substantial inequality. For the school board, a different statute, section 115(c)(37), you just have to have a population imbalance to revise your districts. For our purposes, I think the test or the result is probably going to be the same. I think if there is a substantial inequality that lets the commissioners redistrict, the board will also redistrict. So what does substantial inequality mean? Well, there's a mathematical test for it. So there's actually two tests, and for reasons I'll get into, the 5%, the more conservative test is likely the one that we will use. So the 10% test asks, what is the largest deviation between any two districts in the county? So what you'll do is you'll take the population of Granville County as a whole, divide it by the seven districts, to find the kind of ideal number of folks who should be in a district. So if everyone lived equally spaced out, and you know, it was a perfect world where everyone lived in different, the exact same number of people in every district, you'd have X number of people. Then you compare the actual populations to see what the deviation is from the quote-unquote "ideal" district. And so I'll give an example. Say you had 100,000 people, and you had five districts. We'll just use that for ease. An ideal district in that situation would be 20,000 people. And then you look at what the actual population of the districts is using the 2010 maps, the maps as they currently stand. So say you have a district that has 18,900 people. That is a 5.5% deviation from the 20,000-person ideal district. And then say you have a district that has 20,700 people. That's a 3.5% deviation from the ideal district. So now you take the 5.5% from the 18,000-person district, the 3.5% from the other district, and you add those together, and that makes 9%. Yes. So in that case, that's under 10%, and you don't have to redistrict. Now, say you have another district, and that district has 21,000 people, which is a 5% deviation from the standard 20%, or 20,000 people. Then you have 5% deviation in that district, a 5.5% deviation in the first district, and now you have 10.5%, which means you have to redistrict. It's kind of a lot of math. I'm not a math person, but I think the best way that, the way it makes sense to me is that this 10% test allows you to, it's okay if you have a district that has had a lot of growth, as long as other districts have not also had a lot of growth. And so the 5% rule is, basically just cuts out that last step of adding in the percentages. And so the 5% rule says, if you have any district that deviates from the quote-unquote "ideal" district by 5%, then you have to redistrict. So in the last example, because you had that one first district that had a 5.5% deviation, you would have to redistrict. The reason, there are two rules, and the reason we should go with the 5% rule is that these are court-made rules. So there's not a statute that says you have to redistrict at the 10% rule or the 5% rule, but federal courts have said that if there's, federal courts have applied the 10% rule to determine when redistricting should take place. North Carolina courts have applied the 5% rule. So if a plaintiff brought a lawsuit challenging whether or not redistricting should have taken place, and they brought it in federal court, and we had used the 10% rule, we might be okay, but if that same plaintiff brought the lawsuit in North Carolina court, and we had used the 10% rule, North Carolina courts would say you should have used the 5% rule. So all this is to say, it's safer to use the more conservative 5% rule. So like I said, I'm not a math person. I find this to be the most confusing part of the presentation. Does anyone have questions before we move on? Because I know the math can get a little fuzzy here. Okay, great. So the fortunate part for us is that we don't have to do this math. The demographer is going to do this part for us. So he'll calculate the deviations using the census data that we've gotten, and then he'll let us know if we need to redistrict. And then, once we get that data from the demographer, if there's a finding of substantial inequality, the boards will pass resolutions with a finding of fact of substantial inequality. For the school boards, and so going back to the first point about there being a statutory basis for redistricting, there is a requirement that the board of commissioners would file or would pass a resolution about substantial equality. There's not a similar resolution or similar requirement for school boards, but we suggest passing a resolution, just to dot all your i's and cross all your t's. Okay. If I could have the next slide, please. Okay, so once you, once you know that you need to redistrict, what can you consider? What factors can you consider? The kind of basic principle guiding the redistricting analysis is this idea of one person, one vote. You don't want to have a district where, with a ton of people, and a district with not a lot of people, because then the votes of those people in that small district carry more weight than the diluted votes of the people in the heavily populated district. So that's kind of the underlying principle that guides all these considerations. The next factor is race. You cannot use race as the predominant factor when you are drawing lines in a district. Courts will look to see whether members of a certain race were all put in the same district, if they were split so that their votes are diluted among two different districts. So as a general rule, race cannot be the predominant factor when you are drawing a district. The exception is that sometimes you do have to consider race to comply with the Voting Rights Act. And as many of y'all are probably familiar, section two of the Voting Rights Act protects the voting rights of minorities to make sure that participation is equal to members of certain minority groups. And so there's three conditions to figuring out whether or not you need to draw a VRA district. The first is whether you have a large minority group that is geographically compact so that you can draw a district for these people. The second is that the minority group has to be politically cohesive such that they might vote the same way. And then the third is that the majority group engages in block voting, so they're typically going to vote together to defeat the minority's preferred candidate. And then after that, you also look at the totality of the circumstances. Does the minority have proportional representation on the board? Has there been a history of racial discrimination? Has there been voting suppression? Those sorts of things. If these conditions are met, then you can draw a minority-majority district so that, which would obviously take into account race. But again, the general rule is that race cannot be the predominant factor when drawing lines in a district. Does that all make sense? Okay. There's also, there was a 1989 consent decree for Granville County. That consent decree allows for redistricting in, after a census, like we're doing here, so you know, that's not a significant concern for us right now. And then if I could have the next slide, please. Okay, thank you. So the next consideration you can have when you are redistricting is incumbency. You can, it's okay to avoid having incumbent members in the same district. And so, you know, if I live next door to my fellow board member, and the demographer comes back and draws the line so that we're now in the same district, it's okay to go back to the demographer and say, okay, we want the line between us. For the school board, a different statute, section 115(c)(37), you just have to have a population imbalance to revise your districts. For our purposes, I think the test or the result is probably going to be the same. I think if there is a substantial inequality that lets the commissioners redistrict, the board will also redistrict. So what does substantial inequality mean? Well, there's a mathematical test for it. So, there's actually two tests, and for reasons I'll get into, the 5%, the more conservative test is likely the one that we will use. So, the 10% test asks, what is the largest deviation between any two districts in the county? So, what you'll do is, you'll take the population of Granville County as a whole, divide it by the seven districts, to find the kind of ideal number of folks who should be in a district. So if everyone lived equally spaced out, and you know, it was a perfect world where everyone lived in different, the exact same number of people in every district, you'd have X number of people. Then you compare the actual populations to see what the deviation is from the quote-unquote "ideal" district. And so I'll give an example. Say you had 100,000 people, and you had five districts. We'll just use that for ease. An ideal district in that situation would be 20,000 people. And then you look at what the actual population of the districts is using the 2010 maps, the maps as they currently stand. So, say you have a district that has 18,900 people. That is a 5.5% deviation from the 20,000-person ideal district. And then say you have a district that has 20,700 people. That's a 3.5% deviation from the ideal district. So now you take the 5.5% from the 18,000-person district, the 3.5% from the other district, and you add those together, and that makes 9%. Yes. So in that case, that's under 10%, and you don't have to redistrict. Now say you have another district, and that district has 21,000 people, which is a 5% deviation from the standard 20%, or 20,000 people. Then you have 5% deviation in that district, a 3.5% deviation in the first district, and now you have 10.5%, which means you have to redistrict. It's kind of a lot of math. I'm not a math person, but I think the best way that, the way it makes sense to me is that this 10% test allows you to, it's okay if you have a district that has had a lot of growth, as long as other districts have not also had a lot of growth. And so the 5% rule is, basically just cuts out that last step of adding in the percentages. And so, the 5% rule says, if you have any district that deviates from the quote-unquote "ideal" district by 5%, then you have to redistrict. So, in the last example, because you had that one first district that had a 5.5% deviation, you would have to redistrict. The reason, there are two rules, and the reason we should go with the 5% rule, is that these are court-made rules. So, there's not a statute that says you have to redistrict at the 10% rule or the 5% rule, but federal courts have said that if there's, the, if, federal courts have applied the 10% rule to determine when redistricting should take place. North Carolina courts have applied the 5% rule. So if a plaintiff brought a lawsuit challenging whether or not redistricting should have taken place, and they brought it in federal court, and we had used the 10% rule, we might be okay, but if that same plaintiff brought the lawsuit in North Carolina court, and we had used the 10% rule, North Carolina courts would say, you should have used the 5% rule. So, all this is to say, it's safer to use the more conservative 5% rule. So, like I said, I'm not a math person. I find this to be the most confusing part of the presentation. Does anyone have questions before we move on? Because I know the math can get a little fuzzy here. Okay, great. So, what, so the fortunate part for us is that we don't have to do this math. The demographer is going to do this part for us. So, he'll calculate the deviations using the census data that we've gotten, and then he'll let us know if we need to redistrict. And then, once, once we get that data from the demographer, if there's a finding of substantial inequality, the boards will pass resolutions with a finding of fact of substantial inequality. For the school boards, and so going back to the first point about there being a statutory basis for redistricting, there is a requirement that the Board of Commissioners would file, or would pass a resolution about substantial equality. There's not a similar resolution, or similar requirement for school boards, but we suggest passing a resolution, just, just to dot all your i's and cross all your t's. Okay. If I could have the next slide, please. Okay. So, once you, once you know that you need to redistrict, what can you consider? What factors can you consider? The kind of basic principle guiding the redistricting analysis is this idea of one person, one vote. You don't want to have a district where, with a ton of people, and a district with not a lot of people, because then the votes of those people in that small district carry more weight than the diluted votes of the people in the heavily populated district. So that's kind of the underlying principle that guides all these considerations. The next factor is race. You cannot use race as the predominant factor when you are drawing lines in a district. Courts will look to see whether members of a certain race were all put in the same district, if they were split, so that their votes are diluted among two different districts. So, as a general rule, race cannot be the predominant factor when you are drawing a district. The exception is that sometimes you do have to consider race to comply with the Voting Rights Act. And as many of y'all are probably familiar, section two of the Voting Rights Act protects the voting rights of minorities to make sure that participation is equal to members of certain minority groups. And so, there's three conditions to figuring out whether or not you need to draw a VRA district. The first is whether you have a large minority group that is geographically compact, so that you can draw a district for these people. The second is that the minority group has to be politically cohesive, such that they might vote the same way. And then the third is that the majority group engages in block voting, so they're typically going to vote together to defeat the minority's preferred candidate. And then, after that, you also look at the totality of the circumstances. Does the minority have proportional representation on the board? Has there been a history of racial discrimination? Has there been voting suppression? Those sorts of things. If these conditions are met, then you can draw a minority-majority district, so that, which would obviously take into account race. But again, the general rule is that race cannot be the predominant factor when drawing lines in a district. Does that all make sense? There's also, there was a 1989 consent decree for Granville County. That consent decree allows for redistricting in, after a census, like we're doing here. So, you know, that's not a significant concern for us right now. And then if I could have the next slide, please. Okay, thank you. So, the next consideration you can have when you are redistricting is incumbency. You can, it's okay to avoid having incumbent members in the same district. And so, it, so you know, if my, if I live next door to my fellow board member, and the demographer comes back and draws the line, so that we're now in the same district, it's okay to go back to the demographer and say, okay, we want the line between us, so that we're no longer, we don't have to run against each other. You can't use incumbency, you can't, you can't try and bolster your chances of winning in the next election by saying, well, I'm a, you know, Democrat or Republican, I want my district to have more Democrats or Republicans. That's not typically, or that's not how it'd be. The federal courts have said that the U.S. Constitution does not prohibit partisan gerrymandering, i.e. drawing lines based on political affiliation. North Carolina courts, however, have struck down maps based on, for being overly partisan, twice in the last few years. Three-judge panel decisions, like the North Carolina decisions, are not, not technically binding, but, you know, people, anyone, any, any political gerrymandering is probably going to be highly scrutinized by the public. And so, our, so the short, the short answer, what I'm trying to get at, is that you, if a challenge were brought against political gerrymandering in federal court, it's not going to be an issue. Anyone who's going to bring a political gerrymandering challenge is probably going to bring it in state court, and the state courts have been unfavorable to partisan gerrymandering. So, if you are inclined to partisan gerrymander, keep in mind that there might be a legal challenge to it. In addition to some of these other considerations, you can also consider communities of interest. You want to be careful that these aren't, you know, you're not, you're not talking about, you know, these race and political affiliation, these things that you can't, you want to make sure that the communities of interest is not a cover for kind of some of these considerations you can't take into account, but you can take into account, like I said, neighborhoods being split up, you know, populations that have similar economic, social, political interests, you know, if you don't want, you know, certain, certain neighborhoods to be split up, that is the kind of typical example. Other considerations include, you know, not wanting districts that are too spread out, you can have, you can have compactness or contiguity as an interest, and you can also take into account retaining your current existing districts. I also understand that there has been some discussion about whether or not prisons such as Butler need to be taken into consideration. Our understanding is that the law says that because felons cannot vote in North Carolina, they should not be counted as part of the voting population, because it will dilute the votes of those who live in that district.
Can you repeat that, please? I'm having a hard time hearing you, ma'am. Could you speak closer to the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Hold on, let me see if I can raise this. Okay. Is this better?
Yes. Repeat the part about FCI.
Yes. So, my understanding is there had, our understanding of the law is that prisoners cannot be counted because they, felons cannot vote in North Carolina. So, if you counted the prisoners, it would dilute the votes of those who live in that district. Does that make sense? And could people hear me?
How does that, how does that affect our state hospitals that are residential?
That's a good question. I, I'm not sure. And so do you mean like a, like a long-term memory care facility or something like that?
Yes. So like, we have Murdoch Center, which is a long-term situation there, but, will those be counted in those population figures because they don't fall into the felons can't vote category?
And just so I'm understanding, because I'm not as familiar with this, so they, they're in the prison, or they are not?
So it's not a prison, it's a, it's a...
A psychiatric facility.
Yeah, psychiatric facility.
I am not sure. I'm not sure, yeah, that's a good question. I, I will look into that, and I can get back to you on that. All right. And can you tell me the name of the facility again?
So we have Murdoch Center, we have Central Regional Hospital, and then there's a couple, I guess the youth ones wouldn't matter, because they're not age to vote.
So my understanding is that this would be something y'all would consider in, when we draw the lines, but it's, I'm not sure that the census data is going to be that granular. So, so this is the kind of feedback that we're talking about when we say the demographer has the raw data, but y'all have the on-the-ground knowledge. And so, so that might be something that we talk about when we're drawing the lines, and it might be something we tell the demographer about. But I, I'm not sure the data is going to break those folks out in that way, but let me look into it, and we can get back to you on that.
And I do have a question on the federal prisons. Excuse me. Masked, I don't get along. So previously, they were counted in our districting.
Oh, they have been counted?
Yes.
Okay.
Because they're in my district.
The prisoner's, not the hospital.
I'm sorry?
The prisoner's, not the, I mean, the hospital may have, but...
Yeah, the prison, this is a federal prison. And they were counted in, they were in my district.
Okay.
So, that would change everything huge. I mean...
What, what's the legal premise for changing that?
Our understanding was that felons who cannot vote have not been counted in populations. We can certainly look into it and see what the premise was in 2010, and yeah, that's something certainly we can...
I don't think there's a precedent on that in regards to that, that's why I...
...decisions with similar, involving states that have similar laws around felons voting.
But we know that based on the North Carolina Constitution and the federal rulings, that they're often different.
Mm-hmm. Yes, that's true. Yeah.
So that's why, you'll look at that again, I'm sure.
Yes, I'll take a look. So the federal cases are decided on the one-person-one-vote principle, and although some states have said that that, that principle does not apply to state law, North Carolina courts have said that one-person-one-vote does apply. And this is probably too, more granular than we need to be, but, you know, I think, although you're correct that the federal decisions do not have precedent on, and are only persuasive authority in North Carolina, my understanding is that reasoning could apply here, but we will certainly take another look.
Ms. Chair. In the last couple of days, there's been, that said felons can vote?
My, my, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm just curious if that's accurate, and if it is, how that impacts us.
Yes. So the, the decision was that felons who are no longer serving prison time can vote.
Okay.
So I, I do not think that affects those who are currently serving time at Butler, or other similar facilities. Yes, and Craig, go ahead.
So, to delve into our research a little further, we have found federal cases...
Can you get closer to the mic?
Sorry. People usually don't tell me, I, people usually tell me I talk too loud. This is a first. So, to delve into our research a little further, we have only found federal cases, but those federal cases have applied the one-person-one-vote, which is under the United States Constitution, which does apply to this county. And in the analysis that we've found, they've made the decision that prisoners can't be counted in the census, in the district for two grounds. The first of which is something that one court called a representational nexus. In other words, their, their reasoning was, the decisions you make don't affect the prisoners at Butler, right? Their services are dictated by the federal government, and so whether or not they vote for you doesn't impact the, the quality of life and the decisions, their lives at the prison. The other reason was the one-person-one-vote, which is simply the reality that if you have a district in which you count Butler, and Butler is a significant population, the individuals in that district who are able to vote, as a matter of law, have a larger voice in electing their representative than the members of the others, of members who live in districts without prisons. And so, given the rationality, both of those rationalities, from what we understand, apply to Butler in this context. We think that the decision, even though it is by a federal court, it does apply under the equal, equal protection clause, which would apply to us, and we think is highly persuasive to any court that would take up this issue. And in terms of the voting issue, you know, you're correct. So, North Carolina, based on an appellate decision, at least an appellate court, and I suspect this will be challenged again by the government, appellate court has said that if you are out of prison and you're a felon, you're entitled to vote. That doesn't affect individuals who are in prison. There is, there are, interestingly, there are other states where individuals who are in prison and felons can vote, and so the analysis there is more complex than it would be in North Carolina. Here in North Carolina, because the law remains that if you are in prison, you cannot vote, the analysis is a little simpler. In other words, you don't have to splice up the prison population, you can treat it as a whole. And so, we understand that this is an issue that has a lot of attention for Granville County. Obviously, it impacts the district. As you said, we, actually, I was not aware that the population was counted in the, in the 2020, in the 2010 redrawing, so obviously that changes the way the districts were. We will revisit that. We would be happy to provide supplemental analysis, so that you can follow clear to us that we're not able to count the populations. Or I put it this way, we can count them, but you would expose yourself to a potential lawsuit, and from what we've found, courts have ruled against other government bodies that have counted prison populations when drawing districts. So, sorry.
I think that pretty well explains your, your take on the, on the federal prison. What about Central Regional? I believe you find that the residents at Murdoch Center are eligible to vote, but I don't have a clear understanding about Central Regional.
Yeah, and you know, I, I would, it, my, my initial reaction is it, it's somewhat analogous to universities, where you have students who live there and can choose to be residents. I think it'll depend in part on whether or not they identify themselves as residents and intend to vote here, or if they intend to vote absentee, where they would otherwise live, and so that's, honest, I'm, I'm kind of, I regret we were not familiar with this, but it's a fascinating question, and I'm looking forward to finding the answer and guiding you guys on how we should treat those two hospitals.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. Any other questions on that topic? I'm going to take this out.
We did pass one topic. I had a question about compactness and contiguity. So, can you just talk about that briefly again, and because I want to make sure...
...are drawn. So, maybe in an ideal world, you'd have a square state, and you could draw square, square districts, and, and they wouldn't, there wouldn't be any issues. The reality is that Granville County has, is more rectangular, you know, because of the populations, you have to draw districts differently, and so actually, if we could jump to slide, to the one with the maps, yeah, one more, please. Okay. And so this, I think y'all have a copy of this. This shows all the different districts within the county. Having a district that is contiguous means that it, basically, you're looking for districts, you're, you're trying to avoid situations where a district is, you know, snaking through the middle of the state by an interstate or something like that. So, drawing not just spread out across the county. Does that make sense?
Trying to group it in a more compact manner?
Right, yeah.
Rather than have a elongated or a overbroad district in, in, geographically.
Yes. Yep, exactly right.
But still trying to get the same number of voters within the evenly divided districts.
Yes. And that's why it's so, so difficult.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay.
So, I feel like I'm the color commentator here. So, the, the one time you will see districts that don't appear compact is if we have an issue where we need to comply with the Voting Rights Act. So in order to protect a minority group's ability to elect the representatives of their choice, we might have to draw a district that's not as compact as ideal, to make sure that we collect a large enough minority population to give them a significant vote in that district. And so, there are instances, I, I was, I view Granville's current districts to be relatively compact. There are other counties we're working with, where there's an obvious, what we would call an obvious VRA district, that kind of snakes across the region and has little fingers that reach into little communities to try to pull together a population that's large enough to give the minority members of the county a vote. And so, that's one issue where compactness, that's one situation when you're dealing with the VRA and those requirements, where compactness is a little more, you can stretch it a little more than one. But aside from that, keeping counties compact, not only looks nice, but it, it usually might go to different schools, they're not necessarily as related, and they don't necessarily have the same interests. And so, when you tend to, when you draw districts that are more compact, you tend to find people who have more similar interests, affiliations, are more likely to be a cohesive group that the representative would be representing.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on? Okay. Not take into account, when you're redistricting, we talked about the population equality, race, when there is a VRA district at issue, incumbency, political affiliation, and we have the question mark there, just because that is a touchy subject, communities of interest, which would include some of these communities we've talked about, compactness, contiguity, and then retaining your existing districts. And, and to, just to elaborate on that last point a little bit more, my understanding is that y'all share the same map right now, and so that might be another interest when, when we get the draft map back, is making sure that stays the same. Okay. And so, if I could have the next slide, please. Thank you. So, the process, where do we go from here? So we've gotten from y'all a map of the current district, a map of the precincts, incumbency information, and then today we're going to gather some of, some other considerations you might want the demographer to take into account in his first draft. For, in terms of public involvement, you know, we're, we're obviously doing this in the open, you can have, you know, additional public sessions. We'll take, you know, your feedback, and then we'll have our initial map presentation, where we'll come back, and we will, one, confirm that there was substantial inequality justifying redistricting, and then, two, we can discuss any adjustments that y'all have. And then, like I said, we can go back and forth as much as necessary, as long as we are done by November 17th. And then, November 17th date, again, the rules are slightly different for commissioners and the Board of Education, but the statute says that November 17th is the date for commissioners, and so, we're, and there's no specific deadline for the school board, so we are using that date for both. Okay. And so, if I could have the, yeah, we can go here. So, y'all have a copy of the map, or I think Craig is handing out a copy of the map. And, so we're interested in any feedback y'all have. We've already talked about some of the hospital issues, the prison issue, other considerations you'd like us to take to the demographer, as he puts together this first draft. If it's easier, we have this hard copy map that you can draw lines on. For example, if you know that there is a neighborhood close to the border, and you don't want the line to cross that, you can certainly highlight that on the map, or tell us if the, if it just wouldn't make sense for, you know, one side of one border and another side to be in the same district. Again, that's something we could take back to the demographer, just so he has, he has a little more idea of the on-the-ground issues that y'all deal with every day.
So, I don't have a question here, and I guess it's more directed towards our county attorney. And going from the map that we currently have, we received justice clearance on this map, correct, in the last redistricting? Were we forced to do a preclearance from the Justice Department?
We were required at that time to do preclearance. My understanding is that that preclearance requirement has changed since then, and that's not required at this point, but these guys are the experts on that.
Okay. So, in the preclearance question, that's where I'm coming back to, did we use a different law firm last time, or is this the same law firm that we...
We used a different law firm.
Okay. So, different law firm, different opinion. In the last...
Different law.
Different, different law. Okay. So there's been a lot of moving parts. That's, that answers my question. So things have definitely changed in the last 10 years, obviously from a population standpoint, new sets of eyes on this, but with the preclearance from the Justice Department. Obviously, we're a minority-majority required county. So these districts, and that was the question the last time we drew them, around the federal penitentiary, I believe that there are some folks that have served their sentence, but due to the nature of their crime, are still housed at the Federal Bureau of Prisons. There may be at least one person on that campus in that census tract that is allowed to vote, I think was what the answer we got from the last attorney and the preclearance from the Justice Department. So this is a huge monkey wrench, so to speak, coming forward, not knowing, I mean, obviously, Chairman Hindman has a huge prison population within her district, and it's always been a query, one would assume, and now that knowing that the law has changed and we're a query, one would assume, and now that knowing that the law has changed and we're, you know, taking another bite at this apple, it's going to be a, a very difficult process to go through.
And, and let me say that I wanted to defer to them entirely on the issue of the law. My understanding is there was, there's been some court cases since the last, since the last redistricting that changed the way this is done. The Voting Rights Act, I'll let them speak to that, but I think it was more court case changes.
Yeah. So, there is, there, there is no longer preclearance when it comes to redistricting. So, shortly after the 2010 census redistricting rounds, the Supreme Court struck down the part of the Voting Rights Act that required counties or other, other governments that were redrawing lines to seek preclearance from the government. So, that is no longer part of the process. You know, you raise a very interesting point about Butner. I, I'm familiar with Butner. I clerked for a federal judge. And Butner, Butner houses what I would call, this is a colloquial term, or just kind of a term we used at the court system, Adam Walsh prisoners, who are individuals who, and this is a really good point, individuals who have completed their sentence and are no longer there on criminal grounds, but are there based on civil, civil concerns given their prior histories and their danger to the public. Butner is one of several federal prisons that house them. It probably, I do believe it has a substantial population, probably because Butner has a large medical facility that can help treat them. Man, this gets even more interesting. So, that's something that we'll have to look into. The fact, I'm, I'm still inclined to believe that the, the result will be that we, our opinion will be that we should not include that population. But the fact that they house Adam Walsh prisoners is something that we will have to look into. My understanding also is the, the Adam Walsh prisoners, and again, that's, that's not their official federal term. I'm, that's, the Adam Walsh Act is the act that keeps them in there. So, I, I'm referring to that, that I believe they're, they're a small population, or small percentage of the population. So, we'll look into that. And I'm actually not sure that they actually have their voting rights restored, even though they're still on, on prison. So, that, again, well, that's, that's a, thank you for bringing that to our attention. That's a very good point. And like I said earlier, we'll dig deeper into the prison issue because obviously prisons, the prison population was counted in 2010. It's going to significantly change the maps, and, you know, the law has changed in several ways since the process in 2010. So, we'll make sure that we're complying with the current law as it stands now, based on the precedent that we can see. And to the extent the precedent is not binding or clear, we'll let you know. We'll let you know that this is a gray area, and these are the risks of going in direction A versus direction B in terms of treating the prison population.
My point, I'm saying voting, I leave the address of G.I.S. for the county and board of elections. So, I just confirm, there are three registered voters at FCI right now. They are awaiting trial. They have not been found guilty. There are 138 at Central Regional that are, are registered voters and have voted in the 2010 election, and there are 71 at Murdoch that voted in the 2010 election that will live there the rest of their life. So, we definitely need to consider that.
So, can you give me those, can you please give me those numbers again, just so we have them as point of reference?
There's three right now at, on federal, the FCI prison that are registered to vote. However, they're just awaiting trial. That's the only reason they're there. They're not one of the lot of residents.
Right, okay.
There's 138 at Central Regional, and there's 71 at Murdoch.
Okay. And they're registered to vote?
They're registered to vote, and they all voted in the 2010 election.
Okay. And the, I'm most curious about the, actually, well, I was gonna say, I'll speak to you afterwards, but it's probably best we just have this conversation now.
Yeah, that's what I, I just want to let you know, there are people there that vote, that vote every year, and that's what they'll do for the rest of their life. So, this is a huge population we need to take into consideration at all three facilities. Thousands of people.
Oh, right, right. Now, I, I wouldn't describe 71 and 138 to be huge populations, but they are populations we absolutely must take into account. And three registered voters at Butner of a population of, I suspect is around 1,000 is also a very small proportion. But the point is, we have to treat them in compliance with the law, and we will figure that out. And I, I will probably ask you for a little bit more color on the individuals who are registered to vote at Butner. I'm not quite sure how that, that works out, and that's something that we'll look into in greater detail.
That brings up a second point. We're not actually talking about registered voters. We're talking about population. Registered voters has nothing to do with it.
Right. What's the voting age population that determines the size of districts?
Okay.
Right. But registered voters suggest that there are individuals, well, we understand that there's individuals at the two hospitals who are entitled to vote, and they should be counted as part of the voting population.
So, you count the entire census tract, not just that one individual?
Correct, pardon?
You count the entire census tract, not that one individual?
You do. But in, when looking at the census tract to determine, you know, the census tract includes all individuals in Granville County, right? The prison population, individuals who are too young to vote. And so, once we have the census data, we then have to filter out certain categories who shouldn't be counted as part of the voting age population for purposes of redrawing the districts. And so, when it comes to people who aren't old enough to vote, obviously, we don't count them because they're not a part of the voting age population. When it comes to the prison, we have to figure out how do you treat that population? Do you pull it out entirely? Do you keep certain individuals in? Our initial analysis was because the individuals at Butner cannot vote, they should not be part of the, of the voting age population, that we count towards the size of the entirety of the county of people who can vote, and therefore is divided into the districts. Given that apparently three individuals, at least three individuals at Butner are registered to vote, I'm not entirely sure what that means. I mean, I, I need to dig into that, and we will further. We will revisit that. And then, like I said, we will also give you further color on our analysis that we've done in light of the cases that we've seen and how that influences our opinion so that it's transparent. In other words, you won't have to take our word for it. We'll kind of walk you through what we're reading and the conclusions we've reached.
The other question I have, you, you do know where we all, all of us live in. Okay, because neither, I mean, Ms. Williams and I, neither one of us, if you go by this block, are even in our district any longer.
So, you've since moved out of your district?
No, we're in our district, but if you use these blocks, we are not-
The, the blocks, the red blocks are the precincts.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so this, this was a map we pulled online, and it, and it shows the precincts. And when we were discussing communities of interest, one common community of interest is the precincts. And so, you can look at, you know, where do people go to vote and kind of group them as a common community of interest, and that's one way to draw the lines.
The shaded areas are what, the districts?
The colored areas are the districts.
I, I understand now.
What we'd love to do is, we've gone through, if we could go back to the slide that said a review of the factors, there we go. We, we've discussed the prison issue in great detail, and obviously, that's a concern, and we'll, we'll give more detailed guidance on that. Well, we'll give more detail on our current guidance of that as we go through that process. What we would also like to discuss are the factors and your concerns as we go into this redistricting process from a high level. What are certain objectives you want to achieve? What are your priorities as we redraw the maps? And then, we'd also like to take a moment to kind of talk about, a second part, we'll actually look at the map, and given your familiarity with Granville County and your districts, if you anticipate, like, you know, we suspect there's growth in certain areas, certain districts have been impacted by growth more than others, kind of discuss what you expect to see and how you might believe certain lines could change in light of the growth that you anticipate, just to give us a sense of how you view the county and the districts as we then sit down with the demographer and come up with a first draft of the map. And so, I'd, I'd love to start just at a higher level, maybe at what I call an abstract level. What are your objectives in drawing new maps for Granville County, both the school board and the Board of Commissioners?
I have a question. With regards to the demographer, that who's going to give you an initial draft on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that input or his thought process on this initial draft based on our input to you today? Because, you know, this is, it's, it's quite a discussion point, what we're talking right now. And you're telling me that everything has to be done by 15 November, and you take something to the demographer who's going to give us a draft, and that draft is based on our discussion today?
Ma'am, the initial draft is based on-
The initial draft?
Yes. And so, we have to, the way I view it is, we, we have to start with, we, we can't start with a blank slate. We need to start with something. The current maps we anticipate are not going to be a good starting point because of the growth. And so, what we would like to do is collect guidance from the two boards in terms of their priorities. What are their objectives as they redraw the maps, so that we can then go to the demographer and say, hey, these are the overarching objectives. We now know the population changes in the county. Let's start with a first cut of the map. Then, we will come back to the board, present this map, and we'll have what I would discuss, either a brainstorm, storming session or work stop session, where we say, all right, this is one way to do the map. We'll have the demographer on the line. We'll say, what are the issues? What do you like about this map? What are the issues? And then, we'll go there to have a more substantive revision of the map, so that it'll, it'll be a little bit more hands-on. But from our experience, you have to start a little bit abstract in order to simply get a first draft of the map.
Sure, sure. Understand that. And this is, you know, the objective of this today is what I've been hearing people already put on the table with regards to the prisons, with regards to other things, and that to be taken into consideration, and then other things that's happened over the last 10 years from that previous, you know, going through this process with the census. So, okay, with that being said, and I know that we have other comrades here that's gonna start laying out some of these objectives, which is the growth. The growth that's coming from the south end, that's coming from the Raleigh area of maximum growth and pushing other, you know, people into the Granville County area. One thing definitely that can be looked at that has occurred over the past 10 years from the previous census. So, and, you know, things like that, that definitely need to be put on the table when we get that first initial draft in consideration.
And ma'am, if I, if I could ask you a question to clarify, when you say growth, what I understand you to mean is because there's been growth in certain pockets of Granville County, the districts are no longer even, and we now need to rebalance them. Is that?
And I would like definite to have that as a consideration, but I, you know.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Sort of piggybacking on what Ms. Anderson said, I, I think what we're thinking of just looking at the county as a whole, the major population growth for the past few years has been in the southern end. How much consideration is given to projected growth? Because it's a possibility that you could see the districts totally out of balance in five or six years, way past 5%. If the growth continues at the rate it's been and some other things happen in surrounding counties.
Yes, yes, ma'am. So, that's a great question. So, when we draw the maps, we must draw them so that they are considered to be substantially equal, which means they have to be, we would say they have to be within a 5% threshold of the ideal. So, there can, some constraints in terms of the deviations we can have between the districts. However, within those constraints, if you anticipate one district is going to grow significantly, it is possible that we could discuss underpopulating that within 5%. Maybe you make it 4% smaller than the ideal district, so that you anticipate that it's going to grow some over the next year and its population balance will increase. However, at that point, you are, you know, you're, you're projecting what growth will be. And so, there's going to have to be some consensus by the group that that's something that you want to do. But that has been done in other situations, where we anticipated growth to come, and so, they kind of built a buffer in certain districts where it was a slightly underpopulated, still considered equal under the law, but it allowed a little bit of growth so that when the growth did come, and you're seven years into your districts, and you're not allowed to redistrict because you don't have the new census yet, that one district isn't as out of balance as it might otherwise be.
Thank you.
So, I, I'm curious, is, is that something that the two boards would like to consider, potentially underpopulating a district in order to anticipate future growth in certain areas?
So, the, the big question for me, when you start doing that and you're speculating on the future and using past performance to indicate, which is not allowed in most cases, you know, we had a, a building boon and a building bust we've experienced since this last draft, some of the subdivisions. So, if you're going to look at possibly preliminary plat approvals as an indicator that there's a subdivision coming, or if you're going to say, well, you know, there's a rumor on the street, I mean, what, what type of minutia are you going to put into that when you're talking about potential growth? You know, if the, if the water line gets fixed, or, or the, I should say, the sewer collection system gets fixed when the sources, system, collection system gets fixed in the southern end, you're looking at a potential of, you know, 2,700 homes. And the same exact thing is in Oxford, they've got preliminary plat approval for 700 dwelling units currently. So, I mean, you know, you're going to start knowing some crystal ball that those are going to sell and, and they're going to be occupied within the next X number of years. I think that gets to be a little bit of a difficult task. We already have a, with the changes in the law and the changes of removing the Federal Bureau out of the current map, which I fought against the first time, but was unsuccessful, obviously, the makeup of the districts is going to become amazing, the way that the school board representative and the county commissioners live from a residential standpoint. If you keep incumbency as one of your key drivers without drawing somebody out of their district or, or double bunking someone, if that's your, your premise, which I think is a good starting point, you know, currently, all elected officials here, and, you know, to keep us within our district, I think would be appropriate, and, and not double bunk someone or draw someone out of their district. So, that in, in and of itself is going to be a nightmare. And speaking as one of the high-growth districts, there's 17 new districts in my, District Six, 17 new subdivisions. And you're looking at, when I look at the voting totals, the aggregate between the two people that vote, between the two winning and losing sides, those votes that are cast in an election in, in my district far outweigh, just the loser gets more votes than the winner in a district where there's only one candidate. So, from, from looking at voter turnout in past elections, the numbers of the district are already completely wonky.
That's similar in my district. Well.
So, in other words, your district's already experiencing-
We're both southern districts.
Southern districts, okay.
And then, population shift in the county. I, we haven't seen the numbers. We've seen the municipal numbers, but we haven't seen what the, if you took a-
Just based on the last general election alone.
If you were to plug in our current district population densities from the census that was just drawn, I think that in, in and of itself would be an interesting exercise, just to say that the current districts you have have grown to be-
Yes.
X percent over-
And we, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but that's actually what we'll do the next time we convene. And so, by then, the demographer will have the current census data applied to the current districts. And the first thing we'll do is we'll present you the numbers of the current districts, which we suspect will confirm that there is no longer substantial equality among the districts because of certain growth. Once we confirm that and they, the boards pass a resolution, finding that there's no longer substantial equality, we'll have across that technical threshold that allows us to redistrict. But because we're so confident that there has been significant growth, we're already talking about what should we start considering when we do the redistricting process.
And that would be a logical starting point, would be to look at the actual data, like you just said. So, I think we're, we're at that point.
To go back to that projected growth thought, I mean, I think I'm understanding Commissioner Karen and agree with him that if we go off of approved plats, would be a better situation than the crystal ball method, because even as a school board, we've asked our municipalities several times to give us information on where the growth will be, and we get different answers every time. And it all hinges back to the Seguasa issue. So, I think going off of that approved plat would probably be the best way to look at that projected growth.
And let me clarify, when we talk about the option of underpopulating a district in the, in the new map, we're here to offer you legal guidance. And so, we're here to say that's something we can do within the law. What you want, to the extent you want to do that, whether or not you believe that's a good policy decision, and to the extent you want to determine what factors you consider in terms of trying to decide how much growth there is, th- those are policy decisions which we will leave to the board. We will just kind of tell you what the guidelines are. In other words, we're telling you, you can, if you are interested in doing so, you can consider underpopulating certain districts in anticipation of future growth. Whether you want to and how you kind of determine that future growth will be a discussion among the board members that will participate in. But to the extent there's no legal guidance telling you what to do, we're going to step back and let the board members have those discussions.
Just to clarify, I am not in favor of using potential growth. I'm looking at a snapshot in time, the same way we assess our edulorm taxes. We're not worried about what's going to happen tomorrow, what could happen tomorrow. Something catastrophic could happen, God forbid, and it, everything could be out the window. I hate to, I hate to use a crystal ball and use past performance as a future predictor. I, I think we take a snapshot in time and we use that data, factual, actual data.
The current maps and just what I know about the county and how we have grown, but I do appreciate the comments about the consideration of minority representation. If you notice District Four, the one in green that was on the map, that district really goes Oxford, Old Avance County, all the way down to Butner, then to Crete Moore. So, it's one of the most, probably out of all of the districts, when you're talking about compactness, it's probably one of the weirdest looking. But that's, that's good. I would also like to say that- I would also like to say that that district is likely, and, and I, I really appreciate Commissioner Karen's position on this, as we look at the approved plats in that area and the potential and likelihood that those, those developments are going to, if, if history plays any role in it, the one on 96, for example, as soon as it started, and there are people lined up to go there now. So I don't know how we deal with that, but those are approved plats and they're large, they're large ones that will be in that same district. So I'd just throw that out of information as we look at it because there has not been a large amount of growth in that district. It's, it's now approved, so it just may be an issue that'll play out more in the census, but.
So, so, just to make sure I understand you, so you anticipate, so there hasn't been significant growth in District Four yet, but you think it's just around the corner based on?
Well, it's approved, right across from Walmart, very desired locations for people. In fact, people are calling wanting to see what they need to do to like get in line. So it's, it's, it's probably gonna be, and then, then too, if it wasn't approved, it would be different. But it is one that's likely to grow. But for my two cents worth, the way that district looks doesn't bother me as much as we having the district to allow the opportunity for minority representation.
No, and, and the objective of making sure you retain minority representation on the board by creating VRA-compliant districts, I mean, it seems like that's gonna be an objective of the board, which is good because that's what the law requires. So that's something that we'll have to accomplish under the Voting Rights Act. And so that's going to be an objective as we draw the maps, along with having some level, substantial equality among the districts. And so the, the issues with growth and rebalancing the districts is something we're gonna have to require. Because frankly, that's why we have to undergo this entire process. The law requires us to redistrict in light of the growth that's taken place in Granville County. And so those, those are, from what I hear, objectives of the board which comport perfectly with the requirements of the law, that things we must take, take into account as we start the redistricting process.
So how do you, when you, when you look at potential growth, and I understand it's still within the window of percentage, and I, I guess this is where my, my heartburn comes in. I know there's a subdivision in Creedmoor called Amberleaf, that when the census data was stopped, when you stop gathering data, but the, the building still goes on. And I do believe that development was only half-done at the time that the census data stopped. Today, they're sold out complete, 100% moved in. So you've got 40 new homes that are occupied, that weren't there seven months ago when the census was stopped. So when you, when you start looking at future growth potential, what's, it, it becomes such a crystal ball. I'm totally against, because you, you've gotta have a, a line somewhere that you can say, these are the numbers. I mean, I, just to say that something is either platted or in preliminary, you know, discussions or, it throws the, it just throws such a huge monkey wrench in a thing. I just wanna, you know, reiterate that point. And I understand Commissioner Cozart's point implicitly because we heard about some growth that's coming to the Oxford area. And they're actually working now putting in the first road. So I mean, it's, it's coming, it's obvious that it's coming. And it, they're starting with a 400-unit apartment complexes, and I might be using the wrong number, but it's in that, in that vein. So that's gonna throw that district completely cater wonky. But my point is, do you use the 2.1 or 2.3 residents per household? Or do you only look at voting age population? I mean, you're talking about so many variables from a census standpoint, unless you use actual numbers. And again, this is, our districts are drawn not on, my belief is not on voting age population, but on population period.
Well, no, the districts are drawn on voting age population.
Okay.
Yeah. But the point is, to the extent you want to, and, and we must draw them based on voting age population. That'll be the actual statistics we, we report to you. And the, when we measure the deviations that are allowed, it'll be based on voting age population.
Okay.
To the extent you want to underpopulate to account for expected growth, you know, that's, that's a discussion among the board members and how you want to determine how much growth to expect, how to measure it, how to quantify it. You know, that's, as far as I know, there's, there's no legal constraints on that. That's a policy consideration. And the only constraints are we can't go beyond the 5% deviation between districts. Shouldn't you choose to underpopu-, intentionally underpopulate a district, right? If that's a decision that the boards make as we go through the map drawing process. Which it sounds like that's a, that's, that, that issue is in debate.
Yeah, so board members, just to kind of give them some clear direction, would you feel comfortable in trying to get a consensus around this issue? Either we do use projected or we don't use projected so they know where to go for their first draft?
Let me ask this question. I know we haven't seen yet, but I'm sure when we get this initial draft, it's gonna show the growth that's occurred from the last 10 years over on South Side. It will show that. So that's gonna give us some idea, you know, that growth that has occurred over the last 10 years. And you're saying now, are we gonna look at, or can possibly look at potential?
Well, that's my question. It sounds like we, we have two lines of thought. Either we go with what the actual data is for the 10-year census, or we try to project some growth and do some underpopulating. But I feel like we need to give them some direction on this first draft. And so what would be kind of the consensus of the two boards?
I guess I need to ask the quick question, just 'cause this is my first rodeo. I don't, I don't know that I fully understand the, the benefit or not of underpopulating in a, you know, like I don't, I don't know that I fully understand what that entails exactly. Like what are the pros and cons to that?
I, I can respond to that, not as, not as advocating for underpopulating, but just to explain why it's been done in other situations. So if you anticipate, for example, District Six experiencing tremendous growth, we redraw the maps, we have, we have the option of redrawing the maps where the districts are as equally populated as possible, right? They're all near that ideal where you take the total population divided by seven, and District Six is towards the ideal population. However, if the commissioners and the board members were to determine, we anticipate substantial growth in District Six, where by 2024, that district is going to have exploded and is gonna be much larger in terms of population than the other districts, the board could come to the conclusion, we're going to underpopulate that district. We're gonna, we're gonna draw it so that it's smaller than the ideal, within a 5% range though, because that's the restrictions, so that when the growth comes, it'll actually move towards the ideal and maybe eclipse it, but not so much so that if it had started that, the ideal, and grew, that it would be a much, much greater deviation from the ideal. In other words, you're kind of starting, starting the race, starting the population behind the curve so that when the growth comes, it kind of meets the curve and then goes a little bit before it, and you kind of mitigate the impact of that future growth.
Okay, so I guess my, my next question then is, what is the, what is the downside to having, to being in a district that's so over the numbers, I guess?
So what would, so what's the downside of drilling districts?
Yeah, I guess I'm just not understand, like where, I don't know if I'm asking that.
If you did reach the population growth that you predicted in that analysis, would that be, would that be a?
Like I understand that you want everything to even out eventually over time, right? Like I get that.
Yeah.
Ms. LeBrack, ma'am, if I could assist? I think the, the only downside would be if you ended up with one district that has many more people than you have, let's say, 5,000 people casting votes for one representative when another district has three. The smaller district, essentially those voters have more power. Does that? I think, if I understand what Mr. Shauer is suggesting, is not that the board would try to count how many people there will be or get to that level of detail, but more that if there's a county where they knew there was a large development coming that hadn't yet been counted, that was gonna significantly knock things out of balance, that they might consider that. So if you're Chatham County and the census has just happened, but you know next year Chatham Park is gonna come online and there'll be 20,000 new families, then you might make a different decision. You might put it in a smaller district because you know it's about to get bigger. But not that you would get to the level of detail of, well, this, this district has 1,600 people, but we expect there'll be 1,750. I don't, I don't think they're suggesting that.
We don't need to get to that level of detail where you have a precise estimate. However, as you go through the process, that's some, if, should we underpopulate a district to account for future growth, that's something that the board might wanna consider, how much growth they anticipate so that we have some idea of the degree to which we want to deviate the size of that district.
And I believe we can only safely do this with 4%.
Yes, that would, that would be the rule of thumb.
That would be as safe as?
Correct, 4% would be safe.
And, and I also think that we have to be real careful about how we project this. Because for instance, as, as Tim brought up, Amberleaf subdivision in Creedmoor, which is a pretty big subdivision, wasn't built out at the time the census was taken. So you've got probably a third, a half, possibly even two-thirds of that subdivision not counted in the census. And these are people already in homes. And then we're talking about projections based on future growth, such as plat maps or, you know, approved subdivisions and such. Right now, I think we've got like 350 homes approved in STEM in that area. Creedmoor's sitting on a subdivision that hadn't got started yet and is projected to be somewhere in the 150-home range. Due to lack of ability to offer sewer allocation, Town of Butler's still sitting on a project that's been approved. It's, it's, the plans are there, they've been approved, and we're looking at 600-some homes in that. And there's been rezoning done for another 400 or 500 homes in the Butler area that, that developers are not getting into. So we've got a, pretty much, if we look at what's happening around Oxford, and we've got pretty much, you know, explosive growth potential, but it's not there yet. There's no homes there, there's no people there. So therefore, we, we need to be careful how we project this. And there again, bear in mind, we're only dealing with 4% of the population of any one district.
And I would like to reiterate Mr. Gooch's statement that that East Middleton Pump Station district that's Butler is in District Six.
Commissioner, make a comment.
I, I agree with Mr. Karen. I think that trying to project all this stuff is just a fool's errand. I mean, how do you ever figure that out? I mean, think about the pandemic and where we were there, and then the explosive growth since there. What if we were in the middle of the pandemic? We wouldn't be talking about how many new homes we're gonna be, I mean, we just wouldn't be going there. I don't see how we can possibly, this is me obviously, possibly not go where the census numbers are. Be it seven months or six months or whatever, they are what they are. And some like it and some of us don't, but they are what they are. Trying to, I don't know, Ms. Richardson, if we could ever come up with an agreement between both boards on this. Certainly consensus would be wonderful, but you know how that goes. So I just think we go with what we got. You can't project because we have no clue. Things that were going to happen three years ago did not happen. Oxford Park is a great example of how the overwhelming growth was gonna occur, and then the pandemic, and it didn't go anywhere, and now it's back at it. So it's a crystal ball, and I don't think we should be making decisions about districts based on crystals.
Commissioner Cozart?
Mr. Chairman, ma'am, chair, I don't know, I wanted to just ask, when will the overlay based on the current census, could we look at what it would be right now? Did you mention when that data would be available, based on how the districts are drawn right now?
So, so, so I'm sorry, just to make sure I heard your question correctly. Are you asking when we will be able to tell you the current populations of the current districts based on the census data?
Yes.
And, and based on the prison, you know, taking those out of there?
Yeah, and we, we could present it both with the prison included, with the prison out. We can, we can do on both scenarios. We will have that data by the next time we meet. Our, speaking to our demographers, it's mid-September before they able to start to give us precise data on specific counties, given kind of the backlog, you know, everybody's redistricting now. And so they're, they're trying to get to each county as they can as quickly as possible. And they said come mid-September, they'll be able to guarantee that they'll be, have us information, but we would hope to have it a little sooner.
Okay. Just for the record, the issue of consideration of growth is secondary to the districts, the, the opportunity for minority participation. Okay, just wanted to, just wanted to clarify that. Thank you so much.
So i- if I'm understanding and hearing, it sounds as a majority that have spoken want to go with the actual data, not projected growth on the first draft. Is that correct? Am I kinda hearing that?
You're saying not, Mr. Chairman?
To use actual data, not projected growth.
Should we get a show of hands on that?
Yeah, let's do that. If, if you are in favor of actual data, not projected growth, if you can raise your hand so we can kind of see where we're at.
You saying for the first draft?
First draft, yes, ma'am.
First draft.
I'd like to see it.
Okay, all right, does that give you clear direction, attorneys?
That does, that's very helpful. Thank you.
All right, other priorities that we need, that they need to consider? So far I got that we've talked about information regarding the prison and the state hospitals. We just discussed using actual data, not projected growth. Anything else that's, Mr. Cozart, do you wanna restate what you were saying a second ago?
Just the opportunity for minority representation.
Okay, minor, okay.
I, I, I have a question. May I?
Yes, sir.
Hypothetically, if the Lord shines upon Granville County and we're laying pipe and we're just booming, and our schools are flourishing, and the county's just kicking right along the way that we all desire it to be in the next seven years, so to say, is, and the population shifts based on where it was drawn, let's say within five years as the districts are now? And so we make an agreement in September and we say, we're good with this. This is our districts. But the shift is dramatic within that five-year period. Can it be readdressed then, or do you have to wait until the next census?
Man, I'm smiling because I anticipated this question as you were speaking it, and I don't know the answer. So typically, the, the redrawing is done every 10 years based on the census data, because that's the data that's used to redo districts. I am not aware of a county reopening and redistricting in between censuses, absent a lawsuit that required them to do so because they had to comply with the VRA. But that's a question that I, we will find an answer for and provide for the board next time we meet.
Thank you.
And I want to say, I think that's a great idea for, you know, something to be looked at. You know, 10 years is quite a long time. And if in fact, if you're saying that to check this out, it has become a county thing that you make that decision? Or is that a state, or what is that right now as far as redistricting or looking at that? Is it just a county commissioner's thing? Or is that something that's state policy, legislation, or whatever, redistricting within the, you know, 10-year census?
Ma'am, I'm sorry, could you repeat the question? I was trying to get a clarification.
Okay, my question to you, you said you were gonna go back and look at that and see, can the county? I was asking, do you know whether that is a legislative-type thing that brings that about? Or, you know, can counties do it or law? How is that?
So there's, there, at the beginning of the presentation, we discussed two statutes. One that applies to the, one that applies to each of the boards. Those dictate when the boards can redistrict. And so we'll have to look at those statutes in the particular language to see if they would allow redistricting outside of the census cycle.
Okay, thank you.
And so that's, that's what we'll do.
Okay, any other priorities we need to make a consideration for this? Everybody feel good, as good as you can be.
If I could pose a question to the boards, it's been discussed, but no one said it explicitly. I assume you want to avoid having incumbents run against each other in the same district?
That'd be nice.
All right, okay, thank you. Just wanna make sure that's on the record. We assume so, but it's nice to have it said explicitly.
Okay, any other questions? So that gives you your information for priorities for the first draft. Anything else we need to give you direction on?
You know, what we would, were considering doing was looking at a map and anticipating, well, if you expect District Six and Five to grow, where could you conceivably move lines that wouldn't interfere with obvious communities of interest? But in light of the fact that the prison population could change District Three and the substantial growth, I'm not sure that exercise would bear a lot of fruit by the time we come up with an initial map. So I don't think that's worth our time today. That being said... That being said, if there are ideas that either board, and anybody from either of the boards would like to share, we would be happy to receive those and consider those and pass them along to the demographer as we reach a first draft of the map. And if I could add to that point, again, the first draft of the map is essentially the starting point, right? It's going to be population balance, it's going to have considered the factors that you've identified us, and it's not a suggestion that this is the final map, but we'll know the numbers, we'll have the information, and then we can start to discuss, okay, what's good about this map, what's bad, how should we move the lines? And we'll actually have the demographer on the line, kind of live, giving some insight, probably remotely, giving some insight as we have those discussions. So it'll be a much more concrete discussion than what we're having now.
Okay. One question I have, in your process, it talked about the question revolving on public involvement. Short of an open meeting like this, is there anything else you suggest that may need to be done to increase public involvement in the process?
So I'm not making any suggestions, but what other boards and other governing bodies have done is they've held meetings and given the public opportunity to come speak and address their concerns as part of the redistricting process. And then they consider that as then we, as we, the boards then convene to redraw the maps. And so that's something that other governing bodies have done, and it's really, there's no requirement that that be done, but that's to the discretion of the boards. So it's entirely up to the two bodies here if they want to do that.
Okay. So maybe by the time we reconvene back to see that first draft, you will have thought about if there's anything different you want for public involvement versus just a live meeting. Mr. Gooch?
Getting back to this overcount, undercount deal, do you, does anybody realize the actual numbers we're dealing with here? We've got a population of approximately 63,000 in county. You divide that by seven districts, you're looking at 9,000 in each district. 4%, you're looking at about 360 people in each district that can be undercounted in order to reach that goal. So we've had a very lengthy discussion over undercounting by 360 people in each district, or in any given district. So I think we need to keep that in mind. Sometimes we kind of can't see the forest for the trees, we don't look at the big picture of it, and I think that's one of the things we need to keep in mind when we're dealing with this, this, how we count and what we count. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. Anything else you need from us besides kind of a next meeting date?
No, no. And I think it'd probably be most convenient if we work with your attorneys on trying to find a next meeting date, which will be in the second half of September. We'll have it as soon as possible, but again, the demographer said second half of September is when they have confidence that they'll start to have maps and data that we can use and kind of have a hands-on process.
I couldn't hear all of that, and I may have missed it, but will we be able to see the map before we get to the meeting, where we might be able to look and study it a little bit?
I'm sorry, ma'am, I wasn't able, yeah.
The first initial map, will we be able to get that ahead of time before the meeting?
Yes, so we will try to distribute the map and the associated data two to three days beforehand, so that you can familiarize it before we get together. Yes, sorry, I should have said that already.
Do it afterward, so we can sort of exchange it back and forth between kind and...
Okay. Any other questions or comments or points to make to the attorneys? Okay, thank you so much for your presentation, appreciate your work on that.
Yeah, thank you. Again, this is a very interesting process, and I look forward to working with all of you on it.
Thank you very much.
So board members, we will need to come up with a date later on in September and confirm with school board attorney. We'll let that work out with each of the boards at their next meeting to determine that date, and then communicate between the two boards of how we'll do that. I just want to remind, there on our agenda, the board and the county commissioners of some dates that we have jointly together, or a date. September 9th, we will be meeting to tour a few schools and debrief during that meeting. And so if you can get with your respective clerk and make sure you have information regarding that. School board members, if you'll remember also, you need to see Dr. McLean before you leave for some testing information. Also, we will be following up with you on an email about the impact letter for the charter school we have been discussing. Madam Chairman, do you have anything you need to close?
At this time, I don't, unless anybody has any questions. I mean, I think you did a good job of asking, but I see a question, so...
So Madam Chair, and Mr. School Board, I see that we've got a follow-up for the redistricting without having any data. What's the purpose of that? So we're going to scratch that portion of the meeting?
My understanding is, I was going to talk to Craig and Amanda after the meeting, but my understanding is we wouldn't need that meeting if they're not going to have anything else new for us to review. So I would anticipate canceling that portion of it and scheduling a new date once they have maps drawn.
Right, okay. To me, just to meet is futile.
You'll be together anyway, but not for a meet.
Right, just making sure, you know, from a public disclosure standpoint, that if we've got redistricting on there, that's not the case, so, thank you.
Does anybody else, I'm sorry, does anybody else have any questions or any statements? Not, we're done on our side, too.
All right, sounds good. Again, thank you for your time this morning. Attorneys, thank you for the presentations and the work and the staff pulling this together. So at this time, I'd entertain a motion by the school board to adjourn. If I'd have someone willing to make that motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second? Second, okay. Although, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
School board is officially adjourned.
I now need for the county commissioners a motion. So we've got a motion from Commissioner May, the second, Secretary Commissioner Cozart, although, is there any other discussion? We could stay here all day. All those in favor?
Aye.
County commissioners' meeting is now closed.
Thank you, everyone.